I'd like to reconvene the September 30th, 2011, meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
And do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do. In regards to closed session, item 4A3, which is entitled "Mooran versus City of Newport Beach," the case number reflected on the agenda is wrong. The correct case number should be 30-2011-00447004. As far as reportable items, in regards to closed session, item 4A4, entitled "Mooringside versus City of Newport Beach," the City Council voted unanimously to authorize the City Attorney's Office to defend this writ action, which seeks to set aside the City Council's decision to terminate the zoning agreement with Mooringside. In regards to closed session, item 4B1, the City Council voted unanimously to authorize the City Attorney's Office to file civil action against Mooringside Recovery LLC and the owners of the properties reflected on the agenda to abate the residential care facilities at these locations. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Would we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Rosansky and stay standing for the invocation by the Reverend Peter D. Haynes of the St. Michael and All Angels Episcopal Church?
Please join me in our pledge of our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be prayerful. Wondrous God, Fountain of Life and Source of Goodness, you have made all that is and given us all that we have. We are grateful and thank you for the people of this beautiful place and for able, responsible leaders in the mutual regard which forms our civic life. Give us, we pray, your Spirit of peace, justice, charity, wisdom, humor, and grace that we may find with one another the fulfillment of our humanity here in this lovely city. For you are gracious, great lover of souls, and to you we give glory and honor now and forever. Amen.
We have one presentation this evening. By the accident of the calendar, we did not have a City Council meeting opportune to noting and memorializing our city's view and concern and deepest empathy with regard to the events of September 11th, 2001, and the 10th anniversary of that horrific event. And so we do want to note that this evening, I have a proclamation to read, and then I'm going to ask for a moment of silence in reverence to those who sacrificed, in some cases, everything, and in many other cases, so much for our freedom and the benefit of our great country. So, the proclamation is as follows. The City of Newport Beach joining the National Moment of Remembrance for the 10th Anniversary of September the 11th. Whereas the City of Newport Beach expresses its support of the United States Senate regarding coming together as a nation and ceasing all work or other activity for a moment of remembrance beginning at 1:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time on September the 11th in honor of the 10th Anniversary of the terrorist attacks committed against the United States on that date. And whereas, at 8:46 AM on September 11th, 2001, hijacked American Airlines Flight 11 crashed into the upper portion of the North Tower of the World Trade Center in New York City. And whereas, 17 minutes later, at 9:03 AM, hijacked United Airlines Flight 175 crashed into the South Tower of the World Trade Center. And whereas, at 9:37 AM, the West Wall of the Pentagon was hit by hijacked American Airlines Flight 77, the impact of which caused immediate and catastrophic damage to the headquarters of the Department of Defense. And whereas, at approximately 10:00 AM, the passengers and crew of hijacked United Airlines Flight 93 acted heroically to retake control of the airplane and thwart the taking of additional American lives by crashing the airliner in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, and in doing so, gave their lives to save countless others. And whereas, nearly 3,000 innocent civilians were killed in the heinous attacks of September the 11th. And whereas, 10 years later, thousands of men and women in the United States Armed Forces remain in harm's way defending the United States against those who seek to threaten the United States. And whereas, the lives of Americans were changed forever on September the 11th, 2001, when the events threatened the American way of life. And whereas, in 2009, Congress and the President joined together to designate September 11th as a National Day of Service and Remembrance under the Serve America Act. And whereas, September the 11th will never, and should never, be just another day in the hearts and minds of all people of the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Newport Beach recognizes September 11th, 2011, as a day of solemn commemoration of the events of September 11th, 2001, and a day to come together as a nation and offer its deepest and most sincere condolences to the families, friends, and loved ones of the innocent victims of September 11th, 2001 terrorist attacks. And honor the heroic service, actions, and sacrifices of first responders, law enforcement personnel, state and local officials, volunteers, and countless others who aided the innocent victims of those attacks, and in doing so, bravely risked and often gave their own lives. And in witness herof, I have hereunto set on my hand and caused the seal of the City of Newport Beach to be affixed this 13th day of September, 2011. May we please have a moment of silence in remembrance. May God bless America. Okay. With that, the notice to the public.
The City provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. This completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Thank you, Leilani. I'm going to change things up just a little bit and start off myself with announcements by announcing that we have a new city attorney who is here tonight and his first City Council member meeting in that capacity, although certainly not new to the City of Newport Beach. We are thrilled that we have been able to retain Aaron Harp to join Newport Beach as our new city attorney. Aaron was an assistant city attorney here in Newport Beach and had a fine career before going to Anaheim, where he further extended his career and extended his capabilities and accomplishments in a way that made him an excellent and, in fact, the best candidate for the City of Newport Beach to hire as city attorney. And so, on behalf of the City Council and all of the citizens of Newport Beach, Aaron, re-welcome aboard. We're glad to have you and look forward to working with you. Would you care to make some comments?
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Henning. Councilmembers, I've always really enjoyed working with the City of Newport Beach. It's such a wonderful community, and I do truly appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come back and work with you again and work with the city staff here and the citizens of the City of Newport Beach. So, thank you very much.
Very good. Well, I think a round of applause is appropriate. All right. Now you're officially in a hot seat next to Dave. Okay, very good. Council announcements. Councilmember Daigle.
Yes. This Saturday at University of California Irvine at the Bren Center, they're having a summit on autism. It's called the Kita Summit. And an individual that lives in our community, Dr. Fairbois Messie, spearheaded the summit. And Fairbois was telling me their target was to get 200 attendees. They have more than 700 attendees coming to this summit. And it really speaks to autism is crossing all boundaries, where you live, your educational level, your ethnicity, whatever it is, these people have come together. And I went last year, and my impression was they really came together for information and for support. And autism is something that is increasing in frequency. Now, maybe it's just diagnosed more, but there's certainly more cases that are occurring. And it's a highly credible forum. They had many medical experts, and I was quite impressed with the manner by which our medical community is really searching for treatments and really trying to take this head-on to help all the families. And this year's keynote speaker is First Lady Rosalynn Carter. So, it's great to have the First Lady here. And I also wanted to thank the mayor. I'd asked him to do a proclamation for the event, and they wanted to pass on that they're very proud of this proclamation. They're going to be displaying it in the front lobby. So, they're very appreciative of the City of Newport Beach's support. So, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Curry. And Councilmember Selich.
I have no announcements.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes, I have one. Airfair, one of our citizen groups that has dedicated themselves for many years for the extension of the settlement agreement that protects us from the activities at John Wayne Airport, is having a fundraiser Thursday evening from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Newport Beach Vineyards and Winery on Mesa Drive, one of our three wineries I think we have now in the city. And it's, I've heard rumor that Supervisor Morlock will be there as well to meet and greet, and I would encourage anybody that is interested. It's $75 a person or $120 a couple. And once again, this Thursday at the Newport Beach Winery, 5:00 to 7:00, Airfair fundraiser.
Very good. Councilmember Rosansky.
None. Thank you.
And Mayor Protem Gardner.
Well, one wants to be au courant, so I just would like to announce I did my first flash mob last week.
Were you on time?
Yes, I was. Not like the commercial. I got the message. A little more seriously, though. Huntington Beach recently had a lawsuit claim for $500,000 for a child who was severely burned because of a fire ring accident. And I brought something up a couple of years ago, and it proved to be an inflammatory issue. Yeah, I know. And we had more important things on our, and you're right then, we were dealing with our first budget issues and everything, so I went away. But I think with this, I would ask the council to support sending this to our Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission to look at. And before I get all sorts of angry emails, particularly from the woman in Florida, I thought that was interesting about this, I'm making no recommendations. I'm simply saying there's a spectrum. There's, we can go everywhere from doing what we do now to no fire pits, but there's a big range in between as well. And I think that our commission is well positioned to give us some direction on that. So, I would, if everybody's in agreement, I would like them to put that on their agenda.
All right. I'm sure you'll get a thank you note from Parks, Beaches, and Recreation from that. Any other announcements? Okay, I have a few announcements. Tomorrow, we're going to have a group homes conference. This is our first conference in, how long ago, Steve? Four years, three years ago? Three or four years ago, we held a conference on the issue of group alcohol and drug rehabilitation homes here in the city. And of course, we've had a lot of water under the bridge since then on this issue, and the stream is still flowing quite strongly. But we think it's a good time to kind of reconvene, think about where the world has gone over the last several years on this issue, solicit views from our residents and from operators, anybody that wants to provide input to the city about how we might move forward here from where we are today. And so, I think it looks like we're going to get good attendance. The conference begins at 1:30 PM tomorrow afternoon. It's in the Newport Coast Community Center. We certainly invite anyone who has an interest in this subject to attend. And then, the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee meets on September the 15th at 4:00 PM in council chambers. On September the 17th, that's a Saturday, at 9:00 AM, I have a Meet the Mayor arrangement, the first one, after a little bit of a summer hiatus. That's going to be at the Fire Station Number 7 in Santa Ana Heights. That's at 9:00 AM on Saturday. And then, there are two Citizens Advisory Panels that I chair that will be meeting. This is on revitalization efforts. One is Santa Ana Heights. This is a landscape design project team. This is on, I'm sorry, I don't chair these committees. I am the council liaison to these committees. That Santa Ana Heights Committee meets on September the 21st at the Santa Ana Heights Fire Station. And, Kim, I have that for 2:00. I know the last one was at 3:15, but this one's at 2:00 on September the 21st. And then, that same, excuse me, on September the 22nd at 4:00 PM, the Balboa Village Citizens' Advisory Panel meets in the Nautical Museum. That'll be a very interesting meeting. We'll have presentations from the Nautical Museum. I should stop calling them that. It's really exploration, explorotion, I should say. And from the Balboa Theater, as well as a discussion of some visioning statements, potential visioning statements for Balboa Village. And so, look forward to that meeting on the 22nd. The Tytlen's Management Committee meets on September the 21st at 4:00 PM in the Oasis Center. Then Saturday and Sunday, September 24th and 25th, the Fun Zone in Balboa Village celebrates its 75th anniversary. And so, invite all our citizens to come down, have some fun. There'll be some fun things planned. That'll be a nice way to spend a weekend, or at least part of it. Lastly, Taste of Newport is this weekend. So, all you foodies out there, this is your big chance. It's a great event, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and look forward to seeing as many people out there as we can. Okay, that's it for announcements. Consent Calendar.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 21, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, did you have any items to pull?
I do not, except to note that I will be abstaining on item number 21 as the Balboa Bay Club falls within the 500-foot circle of my residence.
And Councilmember Rosansky.
None. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Gardner.
Number 3.
And Councilmember Daigle.
I was going to vote no on 3, but you pulled it. That's fine. And then, I wanted to pull 16.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I wanted to pull 16.
16, okay. And Councilmember Curry.
No items to pull, but just to note with item 13, we're contracting out another city service. This is our Building Facilities Custodial Services at a savings of $83,000.
Councilmember Selich.
I have none.
And I have none. Do any members of the public have an item they wish to pull? If so, please step up.
Jim Mosher, number 21.
Item number 3.
That item has already been pulled.
It's already been pulled?
Yes, so you're covered.
Hi, Steve Ray, item 11, please.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to pull a consent calendar item?
I forgot also. I had a correction to the minutes on page 227 in the second paragraph. It talks about the Bike Safety Committee meeting on the second Monday. It only met on the second Monday on those two holidays. Usually, it meets on the first Monday.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Does the manager have any items to pull?
Thank you, Councilmember Daigle. We were going to pull item 16 and recommend that actually that be continued to 9:27 September 27th to work on that some more, but we'd certainly welcome your comments, Ms. Daigle, if you have additional ones.
Or do you want to do that as part of the motion, if everyone agrees to continue?
If you don't mind, yeah, we would recommend that that motion move to continue to 9:27.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I too had a couple of corrections to the minutes. It's reflected already? Thank you.
Yes, I provided those amendments. Move items 1 through 21, with the exception of 3, 11, and 21, with 16 continued, and an abstention by Councilmember Hill on number 21. Oh, we're not voting on 21.
Second.
Second?
Just a question, is that a recusal or an abstention?
It'd be an abstention.
Are you speaking of 21? I will recuse myself when that is discussed.
Oh, that's right, it's pulled. Okay, fine, fine. All right, there's a motion, and I seconded it. Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I have to read the ordinance titles and resolutions. For item 4, ordinance number 20121, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving a zoning code amendment to change the zoning designation of property located at 105 15th Street. Item 5, resolution number 20187, a resolution of City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving the transfer agreement for fiscal year 2010 Homeland Security Grant Program purposes between the City and the County of Orange, and authorizing the police chief, the fire chief, and the city manager to act as authorized agents to execute on behalf of the city and any actions necessary to implement the transfer agreement and obtain federal financial assistance provided by the Federal Department of Homeland Security and sub-granted through the State of California. Item 6, resolution number 20188, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach declaring the city's support of an energy leader partnership between Southern California Edison and the City of Newport Beach. And item 7, resolution number 20189, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach prohibiting overnight parking on Back Bay Drive between Jamburu Road and Shellmaker Road. And with that, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Leilani. All right, on to the first item that was pulled, item number 3. Mayor Protem Gardner.
Is anyone from the Mariners Point Project here? Hmm, well, just a minute. I think what I'm going to say is not what you're going to say, so hold on just a second. Let me direct staff on something. Part of our green building guidelines and part of our bike safety is to make things more bike-friendly, and that, we didn't really talk about it last time, although Councilmember Daigle did mention that, but I hope that we'll have staff work closely with them to incorporate some bike racks or bike corrals, as well as improving that one area in front of their property, so it's not so dangerous for bicycles.
Yes.
So, can we communicate that to the developer?
Yes, public works and development.
And I appreciate the comments by the Mayor Protem. I know there's a meeting with Caltrans. There's 22,000 employees at Caltrans. 11 attended that meeting, and there was absolutely no resolution as to what to do with that curb. So, I'm hoping our city, which obviously has a much smaller employee base, is able to make an improvement there that is for the public's safety. Perhaps we can do it with less than 22,000 people.
Less is more. Okay, any other comment here from the dais on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll take public comment.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Jack Dearlings. I live at 411 Kings Road, which is above the project as proposed. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, in regard to the Mariners Point Project, we homeowners above the project believe your vote to proceed with the project is extremely bad decision. You have completely disregarded the unanimous vote of the Planning Commission against the project. I wonder why you all have a Planning Commission if you don't even discuss it with them. I talked to one of the members of the Planning Commission, and he said nobody talked to him about it. And they all voted that the project was too big and that something should be done to reduce the size, in essence, of the project. As you are aware, with respect to the size of the project, it's very large. It has 50,000 square feet plus in the garage itself, and another 20-some-odd thousand square feet of commercial space adjacent to it. It all goes on three-quarters of an acre. That's an extremely small, irregular piece of ground. As the ordinance now exists, they seem to be fair with respect to the people up on the hill that live above, and also with respect to the people that are building below. And if you go ahead and approve this, which you have indicated you're going to do, it's not going to be just there, but then the next lot over, which is below my house, more or less, and on up the street will be big structures of this nature, which I don't think are to the advantage of the city. Also, it creates a considerable traffic problem where the garage is going to be. There's two entrances, as you are aware, plus there's an entrance right adjacent. So, there's three entrances right there, very close, where three lanes merge into two. And I think that's going to be a real serious problem in time for that area. In addition to the size of the project, they've asked for a five-foot stand-back variance. They've asked for the FAR to be increased. They've asked a height variance, which will go up above 40 feet. It's now 31 feet, as you're aware. I just, and my neighbors are concerned about the lights, the noise, even the odor possibly from the restaurants. We're opposed to further development. We're not opposed to further development down there, but we'd just like to see something more compatible to the people on the rim and also to the businesses below. And I think if you don't do something about that, you'll find it's going to be a disaster in the time to go ahead. We thought the Planning Commission made a wise decision. It was called up by Ed Selich to the City Council, and that waived the fee that he would have had to pay, money which would have gone to the city. It's also my recollection that several of you members on the City Council were appointed to the City Council when Todd Ridgeway was the mayor of the city. And, you know, it just looks to me like that, under the situation, that you all decided that he was a good friend and you were going to help him along with his project. I looked at all the stuff in the files that the city put out, and I thought that, basically, that most of it was directed in his favor. In both of the two notices that went out, never did they mention the fact that the planning, that the garage itself was going to have over 50,000 square feet. You had to go to the library. I went to the library one time to get the information, and they didn't have a copy in the library. So, I had to come back over to the city. As you're informed, one of the homeowners above the property directly has had the house in escrow twice, and both times it's fallen out of escrow because of the magnitude of this project. That means that the value of our properties is being reduced. Is the city willing to reimburse us for the loss in the value? Is the city willing to reimburse us for the loss in the value of our property because of the fact that you're changing the ordinances and allowing this huge project to go into existence? Or maybe somebody individually would like to reimburse me, I could use the dough.
Without answering that question, Mr. Gerling, your time is up. Will you be finishing shortly here?
Can I have one more minute?
Well, if you can do it sooner than that, that would be good.
Okay. What I wanted to say in this thing is that, in my career, part of the time I worked as a financial planner, and I had some very wealthy clients, and this is not a project in which I would have advised them to invest their money. It's just something that I think in time will become a white elephant. And you wait to see. Take a look at Triangle Square. Triangle Square was a great-going Jesse, and all of a sudden now, the only thing that's practically left are the theaters. So I would just be hopeful somewhere along the way that you could reconsider your vote on this matter. I thank the two ladies for their vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Councilman Selig?
Yes, thank you. Well, I appreciate the gentleman's comments on the substance issues regarding this project. We've already had the public hearing and voted on it, and this is the second reading of the ordinance, so I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Motion and a second. Further conversation, seeing none, please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I need to read the title for ordinance number 2011-22 for adoption, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving code amendment number CA 2010-009, increasing the maximum development limit for property located at 100 to 300 West Coast Highway to 19,905 square feet. And with that, with councilmembers Gardner and DeGel voting no, the motion carries.
Thank you. On to the next item. Mr. Ray, you pulled item number 11.
How much time are we allotting?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, thank you. Mayor Hen, Honorable Counsel, I'm Steve Ray. I'm the Executive Director of the Banning Ranch Conservancy. Item 11 has to do with a services agreement, professional services agreement with Schmitz and Associates out of Malibu, related to both the Sunset Ridge and Marina Park projects before the Coastal Commission. I would like to address the Sunset Ridge Park portion of that. It states in here that this is to fund services required from Mr. Schmitz and his associates in the amount of $76,236.50 for his work. I would wish to point out that, you know, we have been working very hard as a citizens' volunteer group to find a way to get the park built on Sunset Ridge, because first of all, we have not only been supporting, we have been advocates of the park, but that we oppose the roadway that has been chosen through the Banning Ranch property to access the park. So we have been working to find a solution to that. We do have, we think, a proposed solution to it, but it does involve going through the scenic easement that is on the property, and this would require conversation and negotiations between the city and Caltrans to do that. Mr. Schmitz informed me at a recent meeting I had with him that the city could not afford the $20,000 that it would take to pursue this resolution with Caltrans for the scenic easement. I would wish to point out that resolution of this issue would save everybody an awful lot of time and headaches and everything, and especially would save a lot of money, especially for the taxpayers of this city. To me, I would think that $20,000 would be a very worthy investment to save many, many times that same sum of money. In addition, Mr. Schmitz, when he informed me that the city did not have the money to pay that, I would just point out that this contract you're about to approve, as you're paying him $76,000, to tell me that you don't have $20,000 to do this. So it seems a little illogical, and if you are going to continue to employ Mr. Schmitz's services, I would ask that we be able to pursue, you know, a resolution to this whole project that's been going on and the problems relative to it. So I would ask that you advise Mr. Schmitz to work with us to try to resolve that, and would consider, you know, spending the $20,000 because it would be well worth the investment. Second issue I'd like to bring up is there was an attachment to this professional services contract in the staff report, and a letter sent from Schmitz and Associates dated July 26, 2011, wherein Mr. Schmitz outlines the duties that he is performing for the city, and one of the activities here, it says, and I quote, "Assist city in responding to opposition's misinformation campaign about project." I would wish to point out, as I said, we are a volunteer group of citizens, we're working very hard to try to work this out. We may have a different perspective than members of this council or Mr. Schmitz, we may see and read information and facts differently from our perspective than yours. We are not conducting a misinformation campaign. For you to have one of your consultants writing that kind of language, and I don't know if that's what the city described it as to him, as what he was to do, or whether that's just language he chose himself, but I would say that that kind of information, or that kind of language insults our integrity, is offensive, and it is disrespectful, and it's flat wrong, and quite frankly, shows a lack of class. And I think that kind of language is more reflective of those who use it than to whom it is aimed, and I would hope that you could advise the city, city staff, Mr. Schmitz, whoever is involved in using this kind of language, to describe a hard-working, tax-paying group of citizens, trying to work for the benefit of the citizens of this city, to be more respectful in that matter. But again, back to the central matter, the issue of resolving this whole situation with just $20,000 payment, we think it's well worth it. Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Curry?
With approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further comment? Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next agenda item is item number 21. Mr. Mosher?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be recusing myself at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jim Mosher. According to the city manager's guide to tonight's agenda, this item is your consideration and approval or denial of the assignment of the current 50-year lease for the Balboa Bay Club to a company owned by Winston Chung, a Chinese investor. I'm sorry to have forced Councilman Hill to leave the room, but I was surprised to see this on the consent calendar, since I thought it deserved at least some comment. As you know, the Balboa Bay Club sits on prime harborfront property along Coast Highway, once thought to have been given to the city for public use by the Irvine family in the 1920s, but later determined in the 1990s to be state titlen's held by the city and the public trust. Among the amenities that were added in the 1960s were the terrace apartments along Coast Highway, which were referred to by some detractors at the time, rather ironically, as the Great Wall of China come to Newport Beach. Presumably, the new assignee knows that under state law, these apartments are considered a non-conforming use and have to be removed by December 31, 2044 or sooner if the lease is not being used as collateral for the other improvements. And I'm wondering if we are monitoring whether those apartments are still being used as collateral. Moreover, since 1995, state laws made the State Lands Commission a important partner in this venture by pledging to them, as I understand, 10% of the revenue given to the city, which is supposed to be, by state law, the fair market rent for those properties. And I'm wondering whether we're monitoring that, and if we have checked with the State Lands Commission as to whether we need their consent for assigning the lease to someone else, and also, of course, the obvious question of whether there's a problem putting land that is in trust for the people of California under the control of a foreign investor. However that may be, your duty tonight as trustees is to make three findings before assigning the transfer. The three findings are detailed in the staff report. I've obviously never met Winston Chung, he may well be a fine, upstanding businessman, but I would submit that based on the staff report, the public knows very little about him. The three findings you have to make are that he is, number one, wealthy, the consultant believes that to be true, based mostly on the fact that he has a lot of cash. Qualification number two is he has to be a qualified resort management person or manager, and the consultant seems to be relying on somewhat vague promises that he's going to retain the current management for some unknown amount of time. Item number three is that the assignee has to, quote, "have a reputation for honesty, integrity, and sound business practices." And on that one, it appears to me the consultant has really skirted around the issue. There is some vague mention of other people saying he's a fine, upstanding businessman, he may well be, but the consultant noticed that he's involved in three lawsuits with former associates, and he mostly concludes that, since he's so wealthy, he's not going to go broke even if he loses those lawsuits. That, to me, is not necessarily an indication of high integrity. So I would just say the public really knows very little about this, gentlemen, or if the due diligence has really been done as to whether you, as trustees, should be approving this transfer. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Councilmember DeGel?
Yes, I'd make the motion to approve the item with the appropriate findings recommended by staff, and certainly under the management of Mr. Wooten and Mr. Sheeline, the club has always been so welcoming of our community, so I wanted to thank you for that and hope that that spirit and practice continues under the new management. So, thank you.
Councilmember, or, excuse me, Mayor Protam Gardner?
Clarification about the assignment. Is there another body's approval that we need, or is it just up to the city?
Well, the State Lands Commission approved the original lease document, which described the process that we're following. There isn't a process in the lease document that requires their approval, so it's our assertion that this is exactly what's needed, again, because the commission approved the lease in the first place.
Okay, and it's my understanding that Mr. Chung put down some, put forward a considerable amount of cash as well for the benefit of the Bay Club? Is that right?
You mean to purchase it?
Yeah, I mean, but also for some improvements already or something, he's talking about improvements, that there are plans to go forward with improvements to the apartments, for example, and that sort of thing.
Oh, you mean interior improvements? Yeah, I'm not aware of that, in case you're not.
Yeah, no, not exterior, not exterior things. I mean, do we have evidence of good faith on his part as far as what his commitments are? I know he, do we have, do we have contracts with the property management team, for example? Not just his saying that he'd like to keep them, but we have contracts? There must be somebody here that knows that.
Actually, he has contracts with... It's working, he has contracts with Mr. Wooten to continue on as management. The consultant reviewed those contracts, found them favorable, most favorable, and that was included in the recommendation.
Right, that's what I thought, so, so he does have the management side, thank you.
All right, any other council comments? With that, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
With Councilmember Hill recusing himself, the motion carries 6-0.
Okay. Someone, oh, here he is. Good timing. All right, it is time for public comments on non-agenda items. Does anyone wish to make a comment on a non-agenda item? Please come down.
Hello, my name is Darrell Ferguson. I'm with Surf Rider Foundation Newport Beach Chapter. I just wanted to basically let the City Council know that this Saturday, September 17th, is Coastal Cleanup Day. That's the combination of the state, the county, and other nonprofit groups getting together, trying to keep our waterways clean. I'd also like to thank the city for the support that we get from you for all the ordinances and the maintenance that's done to keep our waterways clean. Surf Rider Foundation Newport Beach Chapter has a first Saturday of the month cleanup. If anybody is interested in that, they can get more information on our website, newportbeach.surfrider.org. If anybody wants to go to Coastal Cleanup Day this Saturday, there's hundreds of sites. Just do an internet search for Coastal Cleanup Day, and you'll find it. Thank you.
Does the chapter have a site that they're focusing on?
Yes, we have, we're going to host a site of the Lower Santa Ana River. We're in the river and along the trail. We're being accompanied by Orange County Public Works, and that is actually right next to the Bard Park in Huntington Beach. The biggest crossroads there are Brookhurst and Adams. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Oops, sorry, please come ahead.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Mike Hen and councilmembers, I'm Kelly Sawyer, a citizen of Newport Beach. Good evening, hi. My name is Kelly Sawyer, I'm a citizen of Newport Beach, and I wanted to speak to you tonight on the protesting that's going on at iHeartPuppies. Basically, I viewed an article of our newly-located Newport Humane Center, and sought out 15 animals, you know, paraded around in celebration, and I couldn't help but think that this was, it's such a sad representation of our city, that we're putting these animals in shelters, and our own shelter website states a large part of shelter population problem is caused by pet store puppies that are maladjusted, they get dumped a year or two later. I think, well, let me just go ahead and present you with that evidence, more evidence. What I'd like to state is, there has been investigations into iHeartPuppies breeders, into the puppy mills that supply iHeartPuppies, and there's irrefutable evidence. I have seven pages of legal USDA reports of violations and citations from their breeders. I also have a media article in the Newport Beach Independent that they owned up to backing them and supporting them after we found the USDA violations as a reputable breeder, which they're not, that breeder actually has a crime against the Animal Welfare Act, Nebraska law, and USDA violation. She tied a golden retriever to a pole and shot it in the head, and she left it there for the USDA officer to find. Not to mention the deplorable conditions that are caught on tape, videotape, by an undercover investigation as well. And of course, they own up to using that breeder and support them and promote them. Let me see, iHeartPuppies has been doing business with Midwest breeders that are, where dogs are confined for life in wire cages in freezing temperatures with no bedding, no shelter from cold, extreme heat, rain, wind, or snow. These dogs are injured, sick, and distressed. It's further disappointing that many cities, including our neighbor Los Angeles, is progressively pursuing ban on pet store puppies due to the conditions that are a fact that they're born in. The commercial dog breeding industry is not monitored well by the USDA, they don't have the resources. Some of these are Glendale, Hollywood, Los Angeles, Tahoe, is that me?
Yes, will you be finishing shortly?
Yes.
Time is up. Time is up.
I would just also like to say, I would greatly appreciate some insight or investigation into this store. They don't, their broker does not have a license. They're supplying Newport Beach with USDA live animals that are not regulated by the USDA, and that's a health hazard. And they've committed felony in court, you know, perjured themselves. I could just go on and on. It's just, I think this is a matter that needs to be urgently addressed on behalf of the citizens, for our safety and for our beautiful reputation for being a preserver of life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
Councilmembers, Mayor Hen, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm going to follow up on Ms. Sawyer's comments a little bit. Rita Wilds, citizen of Newport Beach, taxpayer. I'm going to ask you to consider a ban on the retail sale of animals in Newport Beach. All emotions aside, the issue's a public one. Since tax dollars are used to take in homeless animals and house them in city-run shelters, the shelters are overrun with animals right now. We're completely crowded, and as Ms. Sawyer said, the puppy mills are part of the problem, the retail stores are part of the problem. In response to this global problem, cities like Lake Worth, Florida, Rio Ranch in New Mexico have recently adopted such ordinances banning the retail sale of dogs and cats. Many more across the country are working on similar bills. The City of San Francisco has begun work on the Humane Pet Proposal, an ordinance that would allow pets of all species to be acquired only through pet store adoptions, small breeders or adoption from shelters. In California, the cities of Glendale, Hollywood, and Hermosa Beach have banned cat and dog sales at pet stores, and from Los Angeles to West Monroe, Louisiana, to New York, ordinances that have banned roadside animal sales all past this summer. I urge you to position Newport Beach as a forward-thinking, cruelty-free city that respectfully supports profitable and humane businesses by banning the sale of live animals in our city. We're not anti-business. This ordinance would not shut anybody down. Petsmart and Petco are the nation's largest pet retailers, and they do not sell cats or dogs. They have stated publicly that you cannot do it humanely and profitably at the same time. In fact, Petsmart's statement is, "We created the Petsmart Adoption Program because each year, ten to fifteen million pets are abandoned in the U.S. Of those, six to eight million enter shelters, and an estimated three to four million are euthanized, simply because they do not have loving homes." We hope that Newport Beach will take the lead in this movement. It's very important to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Brenda Calvillo. I'm with the Animal Protection and Rescue League in Orange County, and I, along with thousands of people throughout Newport Beach, Huntington Beach, Coz Mesa, spend countless hours finding homes for homeless animals. Now, that's one issue. The other issue has been previously addressed, is our tax dollars is being used to house homeless animals and euthanize them. Number one problem, how animals end up at shelters are from breeders and from pet stores. Now, the City of Newport Beach has outsourced its animal services to Huntington Beach. Now, the animals that iHeartPuppies sells, the animals sold by Russo's at Fashion Island, a lot of them will end up at the shelter. And with our enormous homeless pet problem that we have in the U.S., we are adding more and more to the burden of this. So I urge the City of Newport Beach to please consider placing an ordinance to ban the sale of cats and dogs in stores. As has been previously mentioned, there are lots of national successful businesses. I'm a small business owner myself, and I'm not against businesses, but when you do business at the cost of animals who are stuck in these cages in the Midwest for the duration of their entire life, and they're bred again and again, over and over and over again, you have to realize, where is the moral compass? Are you giving tax revenue at the cost of thousands of miserable animals for the benefit of a few? We have to consider, of all the hundreds and thousands of volunteers who work tireless, three hours to find homes for animals, because morally, that's the just thing to do. And I urge the City Council to please consider placing an ordinance to stop the sale of dogs and cats in retail stores.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. It's now time for oral reports from City Council members on committee activities. Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, I attended the, I don't think it's called the Liga California Cities, but it's an association of cities here in Orange County, and the issue before us at the meeting was whether to support an amicus brief. It has to do with this redevelopment issue, and being duty-bound, I think I voted as the council would want, and that it was to support the brief. And essentially, the state legislature has done another raid on local government coffers, and this time on redevelopment agencies. And so the gist of the amicus brief is that there was a Proposition 22, where voters said that the state could not raid local coffers unless they paid us back, basically, over certain conditions. And our thinking, at least what all city attorneys have always told me, is that judges don't like when legislative bodies defy the will of the voters. So that's the argument of the amicus brief, which is somewhat of a sideshow to the main event. We'll see what happens with that, and essentially, you know, those with the state argue that redevelopment agencies were created by the state legislature, so therefore, they are a creature of the state, and the state can, the state has the ability to modify those creatures. So anyhow, we will see where it goes, but it's basically a big fight about one government taking another government's money, so we'll see how things go. Thank you.
Councilmember Curry.
We had a meeting of the Finance Committee yesterday, and suffice it to say, the city is doing fine. We're ahead of schedule in terms of, ahead of projections in terms of our revenues. We finished with an even larger surplus than we had thought and reported at the last meeting, and our reserves, while we've segregated out our capital reserve, so it's not part of the general fund reserve anymore, so it's specifically protected for capital purposes, collectively, our reserves are at the highest level they've ever been in the city's history.
Which is?
Thank you.
Oh, eighty-some million dollars, or ninety-seven, about ninety million dollars.
Yeah, I was thinking like eighty-eight, ninety million, something like that.
The actual number is ninety-two million.
Okay, so I hear ninety-four. Okay. All right. Councilmember Selich.
Yes, on August the 24th, we had the Citizens Advisory Panel for West Newport, which I'm the council liaison to, at our meeting. It was the initial kickoff meeting, and the citizens panel looked at the Pacific Coast Highway and Balboa Boulevard areas where landscaping may be occurring, talked about some landscape concepts, and we'll be having our next meeting on the 28th of September, at which time we'll be receiving some landscape concepts from the landscape architect.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yes, we had the opportunity of the first Citizens Advisory Panel meeting for the Cona Del Mar Revitalization Project. They met on the last day of last month at Oasis. Had a good turnout, a good discussion. The task is to work with the vision plan that was created several years ago by the Cona Del Mar Chamber in concert with the Cona Del Mar bid, in concert with the Cona Del Mar Homeowners Association, and to look to see what of that today is still valid and what could move forward with it. At our next meeting, we will focus on determining the geographical area that will be impacted or be utilized, if you will, for this revitalization effort, and that will be, in part, in a major part, determined by the technical aspects of road layout. And so the engineering consultant to the cap is preparing several schemes that will be brought forward at the next cap meeting. That will be evaluated by the Citizens Advisory Panel as well as everyone else that attends. These meetings are very open, very informal kinds of meetings where everyone is encouraged to participate, and once a direction is taken for the road layout, then the parameters of what the opportunities for pedestrian enhancement, for bicycle enhancement, and those types of things will take place. The next meeting is October 5th. It will be held at Oasis once again, and they are meetings that run from 4:00 to 5:30 in the evening. We also had the next meeting in a series of several of the Lido Village Cap, and the Lido Village Cap is focused on design standards for the existing City Hall site, Lido Plaza and Lido Village, and we are in the process, or they're in the process, I guess I should say, of doing a review of the eighty percent complete guidelines at this point in time. The primary discussion is over the fact that the consultant has done an excellent job of compiling a significant amount of information, so much that it's very difficult to weed through it, and so it's a matter of getting it more succinct and more boiled down, and that will actually come before the Newport Revitalization Committee Thursday of this week, at the Thursday meeting of the NRC here in this room at 4:00 in the afternoon. And then the next formal meeting of the Lido Cap will take place October 6th, someplace in Lido Village, yet to be determined as the location, but that will be the first open house of even a broader public hearing of the design standards at that eighty percent level.
Thank you. Councilmember Zansky.
Yes, thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the wrap-up session for the West Newport Fourth of July Committee meeting, I believe it was on August 15th. We had a presentation by the Police Department with, you know, with regard to occurrences on the Fourth of July. I think, in general, everybody was fairly pleased with the results, especially of the family-friendly Fourth of July celebration that we had to kick off Fourth of July morning. The city sponsored a parade and then a kind of a fair, a morning fair at the park behind the Circle K there on Balboa Boulevard. Quite honestly, I came myself, my bike, and I was coming up the street, and I was hoping that at least fifty people would show up for the parade, and it was well over five hundred parents and kids and dogs and all, you know, all kinds of people there, and they were led up the street by the fire truck. It was a wildly successful event, so much so that I'd like to announce that I received an anonymous gift made out to the City of Newport Beach. I'll cover up the name here, but I have a check in the amount of $5,000 that has been donated for next year's Family Friendly Fourth of July. And the donor who wishes to remain anonymous did so in the hope that there would be other residents in Newport Beach that were equally of a generous attitude, that might support other worthwhile endeavors of the city, whether it be dredging the harbor or community events or whatever it is. He was hoping that this would be seed money and spur others to be equally as generous and open their pocketbooks. So I'd like to thank the anonymous donor, and hopefully, we'll see a few more checks like this. Thank you.
And I'll be now turning this over to the, Cindy Hodger. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Protem Gardner.
Well, Sunday was the Coastal Car Classic down at Big Corona, and in the mayor's absence, I got to pick a car for an award. There was an absolutely stunning Auburn, completely, I mean, we don't know what luxury cars are nowadays. You look at those old Packards and something like the Auburn and all the things they have, the little trays that pull out, and, oh, those were the days. Of course, the gas mileage probably wasn't very good, but they had a very successful turnout, lots of great cars and lots of people in attendance, so that was fun. And then we had a meeting of the Tylands Management Committee, a great presentation on San Diego Creek and sediment loads. Those of you who follow our problems in the Bay with dredging and everything realize that San Diego Creek is our major source of sediment, and talked about some of the programs to reduce the sediment that's coming into the Bay, and also discussing more of our dredging. And while we're talking about that, I need to give a hats, hats off to our Harbor Resources Manager, Chris Miller, because I hope I don't jinx it, but this whole Rhine Channel dredging has been going, a massive amount of moving boats around and then getting in and out and trying to keep channels open for businesses and that sort of thing, done a marvelous job, and it's gone so smoothly. As I say, I hope I don't jinx it by praising it too soon, but great job.
I have not received a single email of complaint associated with that dredging project in the Rhine Channel, which is absolutely amazing, considering how complicated it has been, so I'll second those comments on Chris Miller's management of this. You may notice a theme here on these committee reports, and that is, we're doing a lot of reporting on revitalization, and I've got three more to report on here. We're really going great guns here in lots of directions to help this city get even better. There was a meeting of the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee. This is the overall overarching committee for these revitalization efforts. That was on August the 11th. We reviewed the progress of the various Citizens Advisory Panels and had a quick look at the design guidelines for Lido Village, and talked about the role of the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, which at this juncture is really an oversight group, because the real work is being done at the Citizen Advisory Panel level. With regard to the Santa Ana Heights Citizens Advisory Panel, the first meeting was held on August 17th. It was a meeting devoted to introductory information and description of the project, and the next meeting will be held shortly, as I mentioned earlier. The Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel met on August the 23rd. We had really an excellent meeting. It was the first organizational meeting, but we took probably an hour of the meeting and devoted it to an old-style yellow sticky exercise where we all wrote down what we thought were important aspects of what we wanted Balboa Village to look and feel like five years or ten years from now, and we had a lot of yellow stickies up on the board. It was a, it was a meeting that was attended standing room only over at the Nautical Museum, and so we're in the process of boiling all that down, and we'll be trying to make some cohesive sense out of all of those thoughts at the next meeting. I'm very, very happy with how that first meeting went. Okay, that takes care of oral reports from City Council members. Now on to public hearings, the first of which is the Whitaker Residence Appeal. Generally, the way these work is that we have a staff report, and then we ask the applicant to give the applicant a chance to make any comments he wishes to make, take any other public comment. Usually, if there's a person in opposition, they'll speak, and then at the end, offer an opportunity for the applicant to make any wrap-up comments. So, may we proceed with the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you've already mentioned, this is an appeal of a planning commission denial for a project that is composed of, in addition to an existing residential unit, and a new residential unit with a property that also contains a retail shop and a restaurant. And Ms. Fern Nguyen will give us our overview. Nguyen, oh, excuse me.
Nguyen, yes. See if I can figure this out. So the mixed-use lot is on the corner of 15th Street and West Oceanfront. There's the two single-story commercial buildings fronting on 15th, the Stuff Surfer and the Surf Shop, and then behind that is a two-story residential structure, and the proposal is to increase, add to the existing residential, and then build a new residential above the commercial. residential above the commercial. The existing structures are non-conforming due to setback encroachments into the side setback, the northerly side setback, and the rear setback, and deficient commercial parking. However, the proposed project does comply with the residential parking standards of two parking spots per unit. The approvals requested are use permit for the addition of up to 75%, and alterations of up to 75% to a non-conforming structure, and then the modification permit for the setback encroachments. This project is being reviewed under the 1997 code, because the application was submitted and deemed complete prior to the adoption of the new code. The applicant did request to be reviewed under this code, because the project wouldn't be allowed without a variance under the, the new code, the current code. The proposed addition, you can see from the oceanfront, back here, they're adding to the existing residence, and then the new residential above, that's the Stuff Surfer there, and then north elevation is the view from the neighboring property. The proposed addition is 2,668 square feet, which is approximately 58% of the existing square footage. So, I'm available for questions, and the architect and property owner are here.
All right. Questions from council? Councilmember Rosansky?
I have a question. There was a calculation in the report with regard to the, I guess, the value of the improvement as compared to the value of the existing, and there had to be, it couldn't exceed 75%? Was that accurate?
The, two of the findings that were brought up in Mayor Hen's appeal, and were also discussed at the zoning administrator hearing and the planning commission meeting, were these two findings that relate to the cost of the improvements, and the cost of the non-conforming condition, and the cost of the, the value and the cost of the things proposed, but then there's also the limitation on up to 75% of the addition, and 75% alteration. So, it's two separate.
Yeah, so the, I saw somewhere, I think, the value you placed on the existing non-conforming condition was like a million and a half dollars or something, or that was the assessed value?
That was in there in the resolution for approval. The, the main numbers that are important are the cost of the proposed project, which is $550,000 approximately.
Yes.
And that has, that would deal with the cost of improvements to be made, which is minor comparison to the value. And then also, the cost of correcting was, I believe, $850,000 approximately?
Eight sixty.
Eight sixty, yes, sorry.
Okay, so, going along with the first bullet point there, how much are you valuing, is the value of the non-conforming condition the entire value of the property, or just the, the non-conforming commercial structure?
That's one of the problems why I think that the commission had struggled with this, and it was a split vote, is because the, these two findings are very difficult to quantify. The value could mean a monetary cost, or it could just mean the value of the non-conforming condition. The existing mixed-use structure couldn't be built today under the current code if it were demolished, unless there was discretionary approvals, a parking waiver, or something, variance approved. So, the value, it is subjective, but it would include the cost of correcting the non-conforming condition, and also just the value of having the non-conforming parking and the non-conforming encroachments.
Wait, you're saying the value of the existing non-conforming condition would include the cost of making it conforming? Why would anybody, how, how is that a value? No one would buy it, in that case?
Sorry, okay, I guess that's more in reference to the next finding, would be the cost of correcting it. So, the value has to do with the monetary value, I guess, of, well...
This is something we just make up. It's, it's like, I mean, it sounds like it, there's no real rational basis for that. It's just like, if we think it's minor, then it's minor, and if we say it's not minor, then it's not minor.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. I mean, there's a commercial building there, I, I would assume it has a value. I mean, even if you look at the assessor's role, the assessor's role is going to split the value between the land and the, and the structures, do we know what the assessor's valued the structure as?
That number is in the findings of approval. Let me see if I can find that. Oh, 1,500.
Is that the land in the building, or just the building? Just the improvements? I find it hard to believe that that building is worth a million and a half bucks.
Yeah, total value of the property. It's both.
You could rebuild it for a third of that, so I, so it's the total value of the property?
Yes.
Okay, so there was no, no, there's no distinction here between the cost of the existing non-conforming condition, which I believe, in my mind, is the building, not, not the building plus the land. I mean, because what we're really getting at is here, is the relationship of this new addition to the, to what would have to be torn down, or whatever. The land is the land, the land is not going anywhere, the land's always going to have its value. It'd probably be more valuable if the building wasn't there, because there's a cost of demolition in the building. But, so, it, staff's assessment is based upon the entire value, is that how you came to your conclusion, or, or that's how we're supposed to come to a finding here?
All of these things should be included in your decision, but my original recommendation for approval was based on the value, not the monetary value necessarily, but just the value of having a mixed-use structure. It's a double lot, so being able, being able to have the two commercial structures and two residential as a part of a mixed-use project. And if they were to demolish it, they wouldn't be able to rebuild it, so that value is higher than the $550,000 for adding the new structure. But it's all, as Mayor Hen brought up in his appeal, it's all subjective, and the new code, the, these conditions weren't carried over, it was, it's done differently in the new code, so...
Yeah, this is, this is why these provisions aren't in the new code, right?
Yes.
It's hard to understand them.
Yes.
And, as part of this, not only are they building the addition, you know, they're building an addition there, but they're, they're asking for a vari- or a modification, I guess, to allow the, the upstairs to encroach into the setback.
The two modification requests, one is for the rear setback, and there's, there's, the existing garage is already in the rear setback, so it would just be, the carport would be in the proposed, and then the, a deck above, and then the side yard setback encroachment of five feet, actually might go away if the, once Coastal Commission reviews the application for the next-door neighbors amendment, Coastal Land Use Plan Amendment, they are currently zoned for residential, and it's before you tonight, I believe, the second reading. But, if Coastal Commission approves it, and it becomes a mixed-use property, again, that five-foot setback actually goes away. It's only there because the property is zoned residential, even though that there's a mixed-use structure on it.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Gardner?
I, I have to say, this one has really confused me. Sorry. And, so, please bear with me while I go through a few things, but one of the things I noticed, it could be as little as an 8% alteration, somewhere between 8% and 75%, being the maximum allowed, but you're adding, say, you're increasing square footage by 58%, so how can you only have an 8% alteration when you're increasing square footage by?
They're, they're two separate items. I guess the 75% alteration limitation is based on the existing exterior structural walls.
Okay.
So, oh, I don't have it up here, but the exterior walls, the foundation and the roof, they are requesting up to 75%, although their initial calculations say as little as eight.
Because they don't know what they're going to find when they get in there?
Exactly, and they, they did, uh...
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, oh yeah, there's the countersessor, 1,500. All right, and then there was something about the, the abutting property is designated for, for residential use, so you're saying that this will be, that part of it's going to be reconciled?
Correct.
Okay. And...
Assuming the Coastal Commission approves the land use amendment.
The trash, there was an issue with the trash, the trash is not going to be out, it'll be covered?
Yes, there, there's been some neighborhood complaints, but in the resolution for approval, there are two conditions about trash, and the, the property owner has agreed to move the trash onto this onsite, and make sure it's covered.
Okay, before I forget, it talked about in condition 22, about sewer ladders having cleanouts, and we just had a presentation of coastal bay water quality about how we're moving away from that or something, there's some concerns about that, so I hope we check with utilities on that before making a requirement, if we are actually trying not to require it. I'm not, I'm not clear on that. What about the structural integrity? The, the proponent of the project feels, has a, an engineer that says, hey, there's no problem, you can build, but we have an architect from another, from a neighbor who says, wow, it could really be damaged, you could screw up my whole house, basically, because walls could fall in. These are where, I don't, I mean, I'm not trying to ask you to say, well, one person's absolutely wrong, one person's absolutely right, but how do we evaluate those kinds of claims?
If I may, we will be evaluating the structural integrity of the project through the building permit process and the preceding plan check process. So, we will know precisely, you know, what is going to be designed into the building. If we encounter something in the field that is contrary to what the assumptions were, we'll make an appropriate adjustment at that time. If it is outside the bounds of the proposal of no more than 75% alteration to the existing building, then we'll have to stop and make appropriate adjustments, so it doesn't exceed that threshold, or come back and get additional approvals.
Okay. All right, for time being.
Councilmember Hill, you're an architect, I'm sure you can shed some light on some of these issues for us.
Well, I'm probably the only one at the D S that's more confused than Councilwoman Gardner. I guess I just have a whole slew of questions. I mean, I see conditions where they're only allowed to remodel 75% of the non-conforming structure, structural, you know, but what happens when they tear into it if they find they have to do more, and the project is underway? They're limited in the dollars that they can spend supposedly to qualify, but, I mean, so, 550,000, I mean, so what if it becomes a million? It doesn't seem that there's any controls over that, that once the shovel's on the ground, it proceeds. I had the experience of, of looking at taking a single-story building on the peninsula and adding a second floor to it, and when we finished the liquefaction calculations on it, there was no way. And so, I don't understand how a footing on a building of the age of that, with, with all of our code changes for seismic, and current information on liquefaction, how that those footings could comply in any way, shape, or form. And then, I, I toured the property today, and, and I have a, a great concern over the zero setbacks, regardless of the utilization of the property next door. I mean, it's, it's going to eliminate light in the property next door, and it's going to give them a wall without openings as well, except they have all the ocean side, but I mean, it just, it just doesn't seem logical as to what they're trying to do.
Councilmember Rosansky, your light's on, did you have a...
Nope.
Okay. Okay, I, I had a question. I just want to make sure I understand about this trash location. It's not going to be on the street?
Correct.
So, it'll be on the, it would be within the property boundaries and covered?
Yes.
Okay. And there was a, there was an assertion at one point along the way, that I think was dealt with in the staff report, but I just want to be sure. There was an allegation at one point that the entire commercial, because of the way this 75% calculation works, there, and because part of the project is residential as versus commercial, that there was a scenario under which the entire commercial space could be, in effect, torn down, and rebuilt, and perhaps expanded. Would you comment on that? Is that a possible outcome, based upon the approvals we're being asked to make here?
No, should the council choose to approve this, and limit it to 75% alterations, that would not include demolishing up to 75% of the structural walls and rebuilding it? Structure alterations is separate from demolishing and rebuilding, so they would only be able to alter the structural numbers up to 75%.
Okay, so there's no way that there could be an expansion of the commercial space, putting further pressure on the non-conforming parking situation?
Correct.
Okay.
And also, if, going back to the trash, if you wanted to amend the trash conditions to make it more specific about being located onsite and covered, we could, we just have seven and eight, which are standard conditions for trash, and I think that that does what the neighbors wanted it to do, but we could add a sentence if the council wanted to do that.
I don't have any desire to do that. I do, I do want to come back to this structural calculation, though, one more time. Doesn't city staff have to review these calculations?
Yes.
And the plan?
Yes.
And so, based upon staff's review, you're, you're satisfied, staff's review, not just review of what the plan is, but apparently there were some structural borings taken, some, some sampling done regarding the foundation?
Yes, before the applicant even applied for these approvals, they did hire a structural engineer to come out and look at the property, and a letter was submitted with the application to show that it was structurally sound, that they could do the project without tearing down the existing commercial walls. And we did, one of the attachments does show the 8% structural alterations that it could be, and during plan check, we would verify all of those numbers, to make sure it's under the 75%.
This was a certified bonded structural engineer that gave you these calculations?
Yes.
And we have similarly qualified people on staff that looked at these submissions?
Yes.
Reviewed them and accepted them?
Yes, but that is something that will be verified in plan check.
I realize it's, I realize that it's subject to field conditions, you know, and that there is this risk of getting into a project that never ends because of what you find.
I don't believe there was any soil analysis done. They just made the assumption of what the bearing capacity of the soil would be, according to the report, anyway.
Perhaps when the applicant comes up, we can go through the report. The engineers also here with the architect and property owner.
Well, I think we'd have to defer the experts, I mean, that sort of thing is kind of above our pay grade, soil analysis. I mean, I just, I think your approach you're taking is prudent, makes sense, you know, we have experts, and we'll retain them to make these assessments.
Well, I'm certainly not personally qualified to override judgments of these engineers, but I just wanted to verify that, you know, what has happened, at least, to this point. I do note that the person proposing this project is going to be living in it. I would presume he would prefer to be able to sleep soundly at night.
I have another question, just about the basic, what they're attempting to do. So, are the existing garages coming down, that are on the property line, along the back alleyway, and then being replaced with a carport with residents over the top of the carport and deck? Is that what I understand it to be?
The existing garage walls will probably remain in place and become the carport walls, and then the garage will be built behind it new, and yes, there will be additional residents above with a deck.
Behind it, meaning further...
Towards 15th Street.
15th Street. I guess one other anecdotal experience that I've had in doing projects in this town that are non-conforming, is approval was not given allowing any expansion of non-conforming. That you gained approval if you could show that you were, you were minimizing or reducing the amount of non-conforming. You could use residential entitlements and take them up to the maximum, and achieve that if you were reducing the commercial entitlements on a mixed-use property, but never expanding the commercial and the residential simultaneously, and furthering the, the non-conformance. And so, I'm confused as to whether or not they're expanding the non-conformance based upon the approvals that they're asking.
The commercial structures will not be intensified or enlarged, it's just adding square footage to the existing residential, and then the addition of a new residential unit. So, because it's a non-conforming structure, that's why they need to go through this use permit process, but the commercial will not be expanded.
And, and then, once again, the fact that they're going through this process puts everything up for grabs.
Yes.
Now, you know, I guess, the other side of the coin is, is that we should look for some way to encourage them to improve the piece of property. It deserves improvement. But, and so, to me, that boils down with an issue, really, of setbacks. And, I mean, the cost is going to be what the cost is, and the structure's going to be what the structure is, and I don't care what limits you put on it, reality will be reality. And if they're going to go ahead, to me, the issue then is the setbacks. All the rest of it's academic.
Could I follow up on that?
Sure.
I want to ask Rush. My sense of not being an architect or an engineer was, we're going zero lot line, because there's a wall there, and you build the wall on the wall, and that's, that's where you get your support. But could you set back the second... But could you set back the second story or something from that wall without, I don't know, I mean, can you do that?
The answer is yes, you can do that structurally. You have to, you have to beef up the beams and that type of thing, but that, in fact, is what 105, the neighbor next door, has done in the back part of their house. Their, their first floor is on the property line, the second floor is setback. That's what you'll see on Babo Island, if you go down Babo Island, different places.
Right, well, that's part of our general plan design guidelines was more of that. Okay.
Councilmember Selich.
Yeah, I think, I think we're missing the point on the setbacks, though. The fact is that the property next door is going to be mixed use, which means it's, becomes, by zoning, it's going to be a zero setback, assuming the coastal commission's going to approve that project. So, and I, and I realize that there are some setbacks on that property, but even so, the, with that property being mixed use, the code setback becomes zero for this particular property. Just one other comment, you know, these non-conforming, the most difficult part of writing a zoning code is non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures. I've been part of two zoning code rewrites. It was on the committee that wrote those 1997 things that were up there. I think I was chairman, but I won't admit it. And obviously, obviously, we didn't do a very good job of cleaning it up because in the last rewrite, we went back and tried to deal with it again, so we're never going to come up with the perfect answer. It's always going to be coming down to some value judgments on what's best for the community when we make our decisions on these things.
So, you can't explain what you wrote in 1997, is that...
I don't even remember it.
Okay. Well, good. That's perfectly clear. All right, any further comment? All right, let's hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I don't have a whole lot to add, other than the fact that, that...
Can you give us your name?
Oh, Joe Angelo, excuse me. So, I live in the residence next door to the Stuff Surfer. We bought the property 13 years ago. I own the Stuff Surfer restaurant, and I rent to Dave Moon, who's been the owner of the Surf Shop for about 20 years. I want to add an apartment over the two existing commercial structures and add, expand the house to the back. We do have, I believe, and the architect will address this, but, but the alley on the left side there, we, we have the two garages, and then the residence is going to be setback. So, I, I've just instructed the architect and Mr. Ahuna, who is here, we, we had Mr. Ahuna look at, at those footings, and I've just indicated to both of them that, that, if anything, I want this structure to be over-engineered. So, I'm not looking for this structure to fall down. I mean, I am going to be living in it. And I'm going to make that building a better-looking building, the Stuff Surfer and the Surf Shop. I mean, I have, design-wise, I want to use smooth stucco and perhaps Katera stone or some other type of stone on it. In the 13 years I've owned the property, I, I remodeled what was a, sort of a white A-frame shingle house. It had a, an attic, studio, and a two-bedroom downstairs, so that's the house I live in now, and I, I remodeled that house about six years ago, and, and I get a lot of good comments from people walking down the boardwalk, you know, what a nice job you did. It, it's my intention to, you know, this property is going to stay in my family. You know, I'm not, I'm not moving, and my sons, I have two sons, 20, 23 and 25, you know, I hope this property stays in the family for that generation and their kids. So, other than that, I mean, I've listened to the comments, and, and I sort of agree with everything that's been said. Anybody have questions?
Any questions of Mr. Angelo? Okay, thank you, Joe.
Okay.
My name is William Azalino. I'm the architect for Mr. Angelo. I'd just like to address a couple comments specifically. With reference to the question of the zero lot line setback, essentially, your approval in item number four of the agenda tonight of Mr. Nero's property eliminates any setback questions between the two existing properties. We're not proposing to increase the existing setback, non-compliance, we're actually reducing it in that we're pulling back the second story of the existing residential where we're proposing it against the alleyway, which is a rear yard setback, into compliance with the existing bylaws, and similar to Mr. Nero's property adjacent to it, adjacent to the property. We will also be addressing all of the issues concerning earthquake, liquefaction. We've already looked at the soils we've made in our comments thus far. Mr. Ahuna had, before we started the project, we excavated the project to take a look at the foundations to see what the building was on. We've examined those. He's satisfied that they are capable of handling the existing building. We have concrete block walls, and the, and the structure itself seems to be quite sound. We haven't found any issues of termine. We've pretty much crawled all over the property. We're not expanding the non-commercial uses at all. The existing commercial buildings are going to be the same size as they are. We've made provision for the enclosure of garbage on the property. We've actually suggested to Mr. Angelo that in advance of the construction, that he could locate the existing trash bin, which has been out in the street, in which the community makes use of it in, in the summer, other than Mr. Angelo. He actually carts away a lot of other people's garbage, that he can put it inside his property, he can provide it with a closed door immediately between the two existing buildings, which is where it is ultimately proposed to go. We're also looking at bringing, bringing it in from the rear, but at the moment, there is a location that we've identified on the plans where it would go and would be enclosed and not visible from anybody on the street, electronically controlled. Above and beyond that, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, Mr. Angelo, is there anyone else from your group that you had intended to make comments?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I do have one question, if I may. Could you, could someone give him a pointer so he could show the, the east, the west boundary of the carport?
The existing carport right now is that line right there.
Right.
This is the actual property line, and if you go to the next slide. The right one, okay. This is where the, so the edge of the existing property line is here, the edge of the existing garage and carport is there, and here's the second floor that we've set back, a full 10 feet in compliance with it, with the current codes.
But the first level carport is right where the existing garage is?
Correct.
So, there's no change in that setback that you're providing?
We did not provide, we, we have not provided one there, no. We were basically trying to avoid demolishing any more of the existing structure than was necessary. The owner requested that we retain as much of the existing structure as possible.
So, then how deep is your carport?
Carport is 19 feet, 8 inches deep. Can we go back? Sorry. From there to there is 19 feet, 8 inches or 20 feet. Okay?
Thank you. All right, was, was there anyone else from your group you wanted to make any comments? All right, is there anyone in opposition to this application that would like to make comments? Please come up. And then, after, after the opponent makes any comments, then I'll call for general public comment.
Good evening. My name's Maury Nero. I live at 105 15th Street, immediately adjacent to the applicant's property. This thing is, there's so much to this that it's almost mind-boggling. Now, I've been a builder and a real estate developer for the last 30 years, and it's almost incomprehensible what they're presenting. There's been a lot of conversation here about the footings and one thing and another. Well, let me, let me, let me go back. I'll, I better get in order here. 20 years ago, we built our house according to Newport Beach planning and, and building code carefully, and it's exactly in compliance. We built our, our house with a full expectation that somebody at some time would build in front of us, and I would expect at that time that they would have to comply with the building code in Newport Beach, just as I did, no different. Now, we planned our house carefully with that idea in mind. The access and the view, the lighting, particularly lighting, and the parking were all built to those parameters. In other words, with the idea in mind that it would, somebody would build in, excuse me, someone would build in front of us. Now, Joe Angelo, your applicant, is trying to circumvent the necessary parking for his commercial establishments by combining the two lots, and therefore, he can take advantage of the grandfather clauses, if you will, in the building. The, the drawings, now, this is the essence of it, the drawings, as they're submitted, have no foundation plans at all. All of your conversation leads to the foundation, and they didn't submit anything. All they say is they want to be able to destroy, or demolish, or destroy 75% of the existing structure. Now, that will cover the, the total destruction or demolition of the Surf Shop and the restaurant, both. Now, when I built my house, the very first problem that I ran into, when I was trenching for the foundation under my slab, it's immediately adjacent to the Surf Shop. When we got down deep enough to satisfy two-four, two-story construction, I was way below the foundations of the Surf Shop. So, in order to pour my foundation, I had to retain dirt or sand underneath the Surf Shop and do it in eight-feet sections so that it didn't collapse into my trenches. It was quite, you can understand the problem. Now, I don't care who this engineer is, I've seen what's under the Surf Shop, and I, I've bored a whole lot of holes in cement myself and present them to engineers. Now, he bored them in the wrong place, I'll tell you that, because he doesn't know what he's talking about. Now, there is a real possibility, in the, in the event of a moderate earthquake, his building actually could fall into mine as it's drawn. Now, he could redraw it, but as it's drawn, he shows that he's going to use the walls and foundation of the Surf Shop to support the structure, a large structure, overhead. Now, the only way that he can do that is he'll have to destroy a great deal of the Surf Shop and the restaurant in order to put in satisfactory size, size grade beams to support the steel that will have to support the second floor. None of this is addressed. All of this is assumption. He's asking you to give him a carte blanche to do whatever he wants to do, and once he starts the project, how are you going to go backwards? You can't. If you let him start it, then, then there's going to be no turning back, and every six months, he can come back and say, well, we're working on some other grade beams, that we're trying to do this or that, and the project may never get built. In the meantime, I've got to live next door to it. The Saturday, he specializes in Saturday and Sunday construction. In other words, it's his business how he runs his life, but that little house that should have required about four months to remodel it, took him four and a half years, and that's because he did all the work on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday. He might not do that this time. Don't misunderstand me, but that's the way he did it in the past. Now, my time's up.
Well, sir, I'll allow you some additional time. If you...
All right, I appreciate it.
Do you have, do you need very much more time?
Now, the restaurant and the Surf Shop existed in the 1920s. That's what, 80, 90 years they've been standing at that location in that non-conforming configuration. It's your job or your decision tonight to decide if you want to add another 80 or 90 or 70 years to non-conforming structure on oceanfront where it affects all the beachgoers and the traffic, and it really affects us. Well, let me finish. One of the things that's very important is the trash bin. It's been in the street, and it's objectionable to my tenant, and it's objectionable to the beachgoers and the oceanfront users. It's, it's just unsightly and it's unsanitary. I, I provided you with a picture of it, I think. It's just, that's an ordinary occasion. Now, very quickly, I'd like to, well, I covered that. I, oh, I, I think that's enough. There's, I can just go on and on and on, but if there are some questions, I'd like very much to answer them because I've, I've built there. I know what this project is. Please, if you have any questions.
All right, do we have any questions for Mr. Nero? Councilmember Hill?
It does cause me to ask another staff question. These, there's two separate lots now, and part of this is combining the lots?
Yes, that's, that's his intention, do him combine them so that he doesn't have to conform.
I'm sorry, I'm asking staff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two separate now, and the part of this process is combining?
Correct. The first zoning administrator hearing was for both items, and the lot merger was not appealed, so that was approved.
So, the lots have been merged already?
They have not been merged yet, but there's been approval for it.
I see, so that's not part of the debate?
No, and previously, we had a covenant to hold it together because that residential structure crossed the property line, so we would prefer the lot merger because it's already...
So, in other words, there were no setback requirements when those places were built, and being two separate properties, they were both allowed to zero or less than zero?
The, there is some, maybe three feet between here, but on the boardwalk side and on Mr. Nero's property's side, there was zero setback requirement.
I guess I'm talking about the north-south axis. Oh, I'm sorry, so the lots, all right.
Sorry, this is north.
I was confused because of the opening between the two buildings when I walked at this point.
Does that opening remain?
There is a gate on this side, and I believe you can just walk through the stairs on that side.
But there's no plan to, to remove that and make it into square footage?
No, they plan on keeping that. They're not going to increase the commercial.
But there's also, there's an opening running north and south as well.
Yes, right.
Yes, and so, that opening disappears now under the new project.
I believe this is where they might propose the trash enclosure, and there, there is a existing, there is an existing wall there, I believe, yes. But you can't see that, it's on Mr. Nero's property's side.
Questions of staff relating to something you said? The trash bin, say we say you can't build what you're proposing, does the trash bin stay then in the street? I mean, is it, that's where it's supposed to go? It has, we, it seems a little weird, this is just where it is, but there would be no other provision for it then?
We can look at other Sydney ordinances that reference trash bins and see if there's a way to make sure it stays on his property, even if this isn't approved.
Okay. And then, just the, this, the thought of that he had to go below the foundation of the, the existing foundation of a neighbor to build his own foundation, does that give anybody second thoughts or hesitations about structural? I mean, I, I have no idea, so I'm just looking for reactions.
That's exactly the condition that we ran into. We determined that if we were to proceed with a two-story, because we're zero lot line to a building, that the slough off of the sand was acute and that we would have to do pores in about six feet maximum in order to keep the building adjacent to us from sagging.
But that's doable, right? Okay. Okay. All right, are there any other questions? Does anybody have a question, Mr. Nero? Okay, did you, is there anybody else that you were intending to have come up?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to be represented by Todd Schooler, the architect.
All right, so, that's fine, if you would like to come.
There's one for each of you, there's actually more than one, than one for each of you.
There's three packets of seven pieces of papers that-
Yeah, there's more than that.
That was a test.
It's not just a book for you, Leslie. Good evening, my name is Todd Schooler, I'm an architect and a general contractor. And I shudder to say this, but 20 years ago, I did design Maury's house, because that proves that I am an old person. I am, I have just a few points I'd like to make. One of them, I'd like to talk about the 75 percent alteration deal, and what our concerns are, because I'm the one that brought that up. The way I see it, and what is written in the staff report on the front page, does say that the use permit would not allow demolition and rebuild of the existing structures. But, it doesn't actually say that in the resolution. And my concern is this, there's two components to this design. There's an existing residence, and there's also an existing commercial building that's 80 to 90 years old. This calculation is taken from the total of those two buildings. And our concern is whether they demolish, or systematically take apart the existing commercial building and put it back together, by saying, yeah, we're not demolishing, we're just taking this stud out and putting another one in, as they go down the roll. How do we prevent that? Is there a way of preventing that? Or is there a way? If you choose to approve this tonight, at the planning commission meeting, the applicant's architect had said that they were, they actually intended to remove, demolish, rebuild, however, whatever term you want to use, quite a bit less than 75 percent of the existing commercial space. If there's a way that you can find a way to limit them to what they say, or give them some leeway so they can do that, if you choose to approve that, then Maury would feel more comfortable, because we know it's all going to be engineered right. And if they have had Steve Ahuna, who's an engineer I've known for a long, long time, since his hair wasn't gray, and I actually did have hair, is a fantastic engineer. And if they say that they can structurally hold this thing up, he'll see to it that it happens. But we would like to make sure that they don't take apart a commercial space that doesn't have any parking, it does not conform to that, and then put it back together, so that way they get more commercial space than they would if they had to build a brand-new building, which makes their building a lot more valuable, while Maury, Maury had to, has quite a bit smaller commercial space, because he had to provide parking for his. That's the concern. One of the main reasons why they are, and I've given you both the old code and the new code to look at, regarding non-conforming, sorry, Ed. But, is that, one of the, one of the main reasons they are asking to stay within the 1997 code, instead of saying, hey, let's just go and do it for the new code, because the new code is quite a bit more lenient on alterations. But, on additions, you're limited to only 50 percent, and they would have to get a variance for that. And the likelihood of maybe getting that variance is probably less than this. And I think, may or hand, that was one of the questions that you had in your appeal, from what I read. So, I wanted to touch on that. Also, I'd like to say, is this actually realistic? And Councilman Hill touched on this, to put a brand-new structure on top of an 80- or 90-year-old building, and say, okay, yes, it's going to work. I, as an architect and a builder, it scares me. And I'd hope that we'd look at that really close, and make sure they stay within what they say they're going to do. And maybe the architect can touch on that when he comes up here. I gave you a handout on the cost, and maybe that can shed a little light on where I was coming from on that. Whether, however, if, I'm just about finished here. However, we look at it, the applicant supplied the numbers, and they're saying that it is one cost per square foot to build the whole building, and another cost per square foot to replace the non-conformity. And they're so far, they're so much different, that it just doesn't add up to me. And in our construction company, I'm the numbers guy, I'm the one that does all the bidding, bidding, and I know how much it costs to build a building. And, to me, a more realistic cost is the lower number, the cost to replace, is at $364 a square foot, while they're saying the cost to build this whole new thing, and I use the calculation saying, the remodel of the existing is free, is $159 a square foot. It's got to be one or the other, it can't be both. In closing, I just want to reiterate Maury's concerns. And that is, that they're not trying to find a way around providing parking for a commercial space, and that make them put that trash enclosure in. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you'd like.
Could you, in just a couple of sentences, what, so, just to clarify for me, what would make this project, in your mind, acceptable? What sort of things would the council say, that you'd go, okay, I feel much better about it?
Well, there's two ways to look at it. You know, we did rewrite that new zoning code for a reason. And, and while the old zoning code on non-conforming, that, these percentage rules, that was pretty crazy, and it's hard to follow, and especially the cost part is also crazy. If it was me, I would say, hey, come back to us at 50 percent. The other way is, hey, if you're going to do this, you better make sure you save that existing commercial space, because the reason, the whole purpose, in my mind, of the non-conforming building is that you do save these old structures, not find a reason to completely demolish it, and then rebuild it, and get extra square footage out of it, than you would have gotten if you had to build new. That's it.
I've got a question. Todd, I've got a question for you. I don't know if these numbers are right, the $159 and the $364 a square foot, but typically, isn't it more to do commercial than residential per square foot?
Not necessarily. You know, buildings are buildings, and the type of construction is the type of construction. They're going to be doing type-five construction, which is basically the same. If they're going to be building the tenant improvement, then yeah, it's going to be more. But if they're just providing an empty space for the tenant to come in and improve themselves, it'll be less. But, and I know you've been involved in construction for a long time, we've had a lot of talks about this, these numbers are so far different, that it just doesn't look right to me. And you know me, after being on that committee for so, I'm the guy with my calculator out all the time, and I looked at that, and right off the bat, I thought, wait a minute, there's something wrong here. And, and it's, it can't be that way. When was the last time you were able to, what decade were you able to build 7,000 square feet for $159 a square foot?
Okay. Other public comment?
Hi. Thank you for having me. My name is Mauret Kunsy, and I'm the acupuncturist who's Maury's tenant. And I'm concerned about the, all the parking, or the lack of parking, between Joe's place and my place, our place, and across the alley, there's 10 parking places, or 11 parking places. And with two more people living there, and their friends, I think it's going to be really a tight fit. And I'm also concerned, because my business, I like it to be quiet, as an acupuncturist, and with construction, and then the possibility of unruly neighbors who want to play loud music. I'm not interested in that, or I wouldn't like that. So, thank you.
Hi, Max Liskin. I have just a couple of comments, and one goes to something said earlier this evening about the fire pits. And very briefly, I think a solution that might be very helpful, which was mentioned a couple of years ago, is just making sure that people don't have any tent-type structures.
Excuse me, Max, we're on the, we're on the agenda item for this improvement.
Excuse me, my mistake, then I speak about this. Number two, and really, the reason I came down here tonight, was I go past this area every day, probably several times. And one of the things I've always noticed is all of the picnic benches, which are set up on the other side of the restaurant. And in my quest for revenues for the city of Newport, it's always been curious to me whether or not that property is leased or paid for in any way. And as silly as that sounds, I think it speaks to what we're talking about here, to some degree, about potentially what happens in the future, and the commercial use of the property. Because I think the last thing that area needs is more congestion on the weekends, with people running across with their meals. At one point, I think there was some waitress or waiter service there. I've always sort of curious, is the city getting paid for those picnic tables? That's number one. Number two, I think you should consider the additional traffic, because the 15th Street area has become a meeting place for certain groups, which I think the community supports. But this just might really intensify the use in that area. And if you are going to have heavy construction, which will only be temporary, I think that the applicant should be held to very stringent guidelines, if they are thinking about building there, and also perhaps on the weekend, as this gentleman suggests. So, that's all I'd like to contribute this evening.
That's interesting, and this picture, there are picnic tables, is that?
Yeah, I walked by there, too. I don't know that they're for the exclusive use of the stuffed serfers, so I've never looked at them as something that would be subject to an encroachment permit and a payment. It's my understanding there's no payment to the city, beyond sales tax.
Because I know that we had the tables, we had the tables at Big Corona, the Fuji Grill, but anybody could sit at it. I'm sure the proprietor hoped they wouldn't, but they could, okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Oh, that's right. Joe, did you want to make any further comments?
Just, very briefly, and just really one comment. The question is whether or not we intend to demolish the existing commercial buildings. We have no intention of demolishing the existing commercial buildings. We will modify them only as much as we have intended thus far. We really have planned on minimal demolition to the existing buildings, Joe would like to keep them as much in operation. And there is no expansion, because if we attempted to expand them, we would be in violation of the bylaw, we would have issues related to additional parking. The issue is to maintain the buildings, and to improve the exterior look of them, because they'll look, they have a good-looking project, we're done. And I have built numerous buildings at that price, just finished a 9,000-square-foot house at that $159 a square foot, and as the contractor as well, so I can wear both hats. And I've built a five-story building over top of a 120-year-old, so, story building, and it's still standing, and it's quite happy, so. Happy to answer any other questions.
If these buildings are as old as they are, have they had any seismic retrofits over the course of years?
To the best of my knowledge, there have been no seismic retrofits, there's been no cracking, there's no, there's no structural issues related to existing buildings, they're really sound, existing buildings, I mean, this is the reality of it.
This is sort of like the bell tower at Harbor High School. It was such a seismic problem, they had to take it down, and it took, I forget how many blows of the wrecking ball to bring it down, and just didn't want to come down?
This is, this is, you know, an existing residential building, it's light-frame construction that's going over top of it, it's not a heavy structure that's going over top of it, so that's part of what's going on, so.
I've got a question. You spoke about the $159 a square foot, can you give us more information on how you arrived at that, and then the comment that was made on the differential between that and commercial construction, which you estimated at $364 a square foot?
The residential was based on current construction work that I've just completed in the last 12 months, a house in Ocean Ranch in Laguna Niguel. In fact, our cost was less than that, and this was an increase, because it's down in Newport, it's on the beach, and it's in a hard-access site. The commercial costs were higher, because they included if we had to demolish the existing commercial buildings, rebuild them according to current commercial codes, with automated sprinkler systems, mechanical systems that were related, commercial costs will just simply be higher than they are for residential. You know, it's just a fact of life. It's a higher structure building, and it was cost of replacing that structure.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question for staff. On the non-conforming structures from the former code, it says, language is both basically the same, for structural alterations and additions, alteration of up to 75 percent of the structural elements within any 12-month period. So, does that mean that they do, they go in there, and they go, ah, we really got to do a lot, but they can come back the next year, if they don't finish and get more? How is that controlled?
That might be the case, if we didn't have a code change in the middle of this. So, if this project were approved and built, they would be limited to the 75 square, or 75 percent. Any new projects, the new code would be applicable, which limits it to 50 percent for a 10-year period.
But, they can come back in a year, and get the 50 percent. So, if they did encounter the problems that were anticipated, so they get in there, that's been one of the concerns, is that they get in there, and they go, oh, wow, it's not 75 percent, it's 85 percent because of all these things. And, first of all, in that case, it takes a lot of gall for us to go, well, too bad, you lose Buck Week. But, even if we did, then they could just wait a couple of months, and then come back in and say, okay, this is what we need, and go 50 percent.
Well, the current code, the 50 percent is for addition, structural alterations are not limited in the new code.
Oh, so they can-
Yeah, they could do foundation, all structural, yeah, they can do, yeah.
Councilmember Selich.
1997 is coming back to me.
You know, I was thinking a little earlier, you've been hanging around too long, because now you're having to deal with your own mistakes.
That's true. You know, the reason that we did this staged approach was that, just because of the point that you brought up, if you went and did 25 percent, which is where we originally started on this thing, then you could come in over the course of three years, and remodel 75 percent. So, we created a hierarchy of more restrictive permits, to get you to the 75 percent level, but the intent, and I'm not saying this is how it was practiced, but the intent when we wrote these things, was that the maximum alteration would be 75 percent, that you couldn't do 75 percent, and then come back and start over with 25 percent.
And I presume that's how staff will interpret this. Well, thank you for that clarification, I think that's the first one we've had this evening, honestly. All right. Councilmember Hill?
The expansion of the residence, the new residence, what's the square footage of
2,668 square feet is the proposed addition.
Yes, above the commercial is 2,305, but the existing residential is proposed to be expanded by 1,235 square feet on the second floor. And then, the garage is actually getting smaller with the addition of the carports.
And there are two separate residences, so none of this triggers the new fire code, then, for sprinkling?
It might, yes. Even though this is being, this would be constructed under the previous zoning code, the new building codes would be applicable.
And, at least in my memory of going through those new fire codes, we talked about residence, I don't remember talking about mixed use, so how does a square footage below? I mean, if you're remodeling to 75 percent, doesn't that trigger that square footage into it as well? And so, wouldn't you have to now sprinkle the entire complex, if you will?
I believe it's a condition of approval that we got from when Fire and Building reviewed the application, let me find that.
The answer is yes, and whatever modifications are made, it'll have to comply with today's
Okay. Any more questions? All right. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? I'll offer, go ahead. I'll offer a motion. I'm going to move approval based upon the staff's recommendations here. Approval of the project. And I guess I just offer these thoughts. We've actually had it confirmed by both the applicant and the opponent that it can be engineered correctly, and it can be built to the correct engineering standards for the foundation, although it might be harder, a little more expensive, and you have to be a little more careful. The trash enclosure is going to be enclosed, so that objection sort of goes away, and I'm glad for that, although I think that it is true that that trash enclosure actually is beneficial to the limiting the trash in the area, because everybody runs along there and throws trash in it. That won't happen anymore. I hope it doesn't end up on the street. But in any event, it's better that the trash enclosure be enclosed. And as to the parking, we've heard it said now several times, the commercial area will not be expanded. And if anybody feels like we need to alter the resolutions to make that so abundantly clear that it cannot be refuted, I'd be happy to do that. But from what I've heard, that's not necessary. So as far as I'm concerned, the main objections that have been raised have been dealt with. I'm certainly not in a position to counter the engineering judgments that have been made here. And I didn't hear the opponents bring an engineer up here to counter that. And so, far as I'm concerned, we should allow the project to go forward, and I'll make that motion. So, council or Mayor Protim Gardner?
Could I just make a note that in the final approval, that there's going to be, staff is going to follow up on condition number 22 to see if there has been a change in what the utility department wants in terms of sewer laterals?
If I may, we can just remove that condition, and if it is a requirement, then we'll implement it at plan check, whether or not it's a condition or not.
Okay. Is there any other comment from council? Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I will read the title for resolution number 2011-90, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach reversing the decision of the Planning Commission and approving use permit number UP 2010-021 and modification permit number MD 2010-027 for an addition and alterations to a non-conforming structure that will encroach into the side and rear setbacks located at 10115th Street. With council members Hill and Rozansky voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. Yeah, I do, I do hope this is the last one of these that we're going to have to see.
I hope I never see 1997 again.
Yeah, this was a whole lot of brain damage tonight. Okay.
I move the next item.
I know, Mr. Mayor, it'd be interesting if there's anyone in the audience to speak on the next item. We could certainly do this. Mr. Rozansky, may I have some questions you want to...
No, I'm just going to recuse myself, as I do rent property within 500 feet of this project.
Okay, do we have a staff report? A brief one?
Yes, I have a brief, part of a point if you desire.
Well, do we feel compared to Hill, compelled to hear a staff report on this?
I thought that the written staff report was excellent and very informative.
Certainly answered all my questions.
Thank you.
So I guess we don't need a staff report.
Okay.
Does council have any questions regarding this project that they'd like to ask staff?
No, I just thought it was interesting that of all of the applications gotten, this is really the first one that has gone this direction, instead of asking for additional residential or mixed use or something. Very interesting. But I move the action.
All right, we have a message, a motion, and a second. Is there a public comment on this item? Seeing none, bring it back. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Must read the titles first. Resolution number 2011-91, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving amendment to the land use element of the general plan to change the land use designation from multi-unit residential to general industrial for property located at 1537 Monrovia Avenue. Resolution number 2011-92, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving amendment to the land use element of the general plan to change the land use designation from multi-unit residential to general industrial for property located at 1539 Monrovia Avenue. And ordinance number 2011-23 for introduction and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving zoning code amendment to change the zoning designation of properties located at 1537 and 1539 Monrovia Avenue. With that, with Councilmember Rozansky recusing himself, the motion carries 6-0.
Okay. Steve, you can come back in now. Item number 24, block grant. I'm assuming we have a brief staff report.
Mayor Hen, we have a very brief staff report. This is just the annual reporting requirement that we need to proceed with in conformance with our receipt of the community development block grant funds. We have our consultant in the audience this evening, Clint Whited, with LDM Associates, who can answer any questions of council.
I was just pleased to see that we seem to be keeping our administrative costs within what nonprofits try to maintain, and that's nice.
Are we done with the staff report?
I have a question for you. What's on the horizon with federal block grants? Any predictions?
The latest that we've heard from the community development organizations is they expect level funding for CDBG or something close to it, and another cut to the home investment partnerships program, which Newport Beach doesn't receive. So we're looking for something similar to what you approved for 2011. We're hoping for it.
I would move the item.
Second?
All right, motion and a second. We do need public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, back to council. Please vote.
With Councilmember Rozansky absent, the motion carries.
Okay. Councilmember Rozansky was finishing off the cookies a minute ago, and so I'm assuming he'll be here shortly.
There were none left.
Oh, that's...
There what?
There were none left.
Well, he was eating something in there a minute ago. So, all right. All right. Put it back together here. Item number 25.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is a request to construct non-standard private improvements in the public right-of-way at 3431 Ocean Boulevard via an encroachment permit and agreement. As you may recall, this property has been around. It was first presented to you back in 2006 with some rather extensive requests for some encroachments. I think what the applicant is proposing at this time is fairly reasonable. We've met with them, we've tried to minimize the amount of encroachment into the public right-of-way. As you may recall, this is one of the properties on Ocean that has, uses a shared driveway that's kind of a loop coming down from Ocean Boulevard. And I apologize, I don't have an exhibit for you. The exhibits we have didn't really make a very good projection, but there are exhibits in the report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about those. But I guess in essence, the reason why we're here tonight is because L6 requires you to approve this. I don't have the authority to approve this, but I think we, as staff, we recommend that you do approve this. What is included are some non-standard improvements in the way of textured paving, redoing a retaining wall, existing retaining wall. The applicant also would like to straighten out a kink that's in the existing retaining wall, and I think we're in agreement with that, as long as the resultant wall is placed so there's no net increase or net loss of public area. I think that would be a fair way to go, and it's a rather minor adjustment, really, in the existing wall alignment. In addition, there's also some transformers and gas meters and things that have to be in the public right-of-way as a result of the house with the reduced setback in that location. So we don't have any real big issues about it, and we would recommend that you approve it.
Just as a, I walked it, and I was concerned when I first read it, I thought, well, it was up on the walkway, and we were going to take away from the public's walking area, and it's not at all. This is an area where occasionally people will jog down that path, but it's not a thoroughfare. So I don't think that we're impinging at all upon the public's enjoyment of Ocean Boulevard and the views and everything.
And I should also add that the applicant is willing to re-landscape a good portion of that slope and take on the maintenance of it, which is, I think, a good benefit to the city.
Okay. Councilmember Selig.
As Yogi Berra said, it's deja vu all over again. We spent a lot of time on this a few years ago. So have all the objections we had before removed in your recommendation there?
Yes, I think the proposal now is less intense than originally proposed back in 2006, and I think what's being asked for is reasonable and appropriate.
Any other questions of staff? All right, is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on this item?
My name is Lawrence Tabak. I'm the property owner. Thank you for considering this application. The only one thing that the staff put in the report is that the wall should be moved forward so that there's no net gain for me of public land, and I'm totally okay with that, but I just want to make it clear that there was a garbage receptacle or a little hut that was constructed, and that's actually what caused this kink in the wall. And this was maybe constructed 50, 60 years ago with the original house. It was built out of the same materials as the house. It had a little roof on it, and it was basically for the exclusive use of the homeowner who built that structure many years ago. So we demolished that and essentially gave up the use of that land. And now when we straighten out the kink in the wall, by doing that, we will actually be taking some of the public land by straightening the wall, but we gave up what I would consider equal amount of land, which is maybe an area of seven feet by seven feet or something like that. So it's kind of a wash, and I just want to make sure that, you know, that we're all on the same page about that, or unless, you know, you guys have some issue with that.
Well, I think we're looking at it from what's existing out there today as the wall, and I think what we're really talking about is probably inches, and moving that wall a little closer, just so there's no net increase in usable area.
Well, there's an existing piece of wall that runs parallel to Ocean. We want to leave that alone and just straighten the adjacent piece so that it all lines up in one line. That's kind of, would give it the nicest look. And I just want to make sure that that's, we're all on the same page, that that's what we're doing, unless you don't agree with that.
Well, I think what we were thinking along the lines that you might reconstruct that portion, that small portion of wall, and essentially, so there's no net increase in area in that. I understand what you're saying about the trash enclosure, but the trash enclosure wasn't really a legitimate improvement in the public right-of-way initially. It was essentially a non-conforming use. We're just trying to make sure that we're not intensifying any of the use in the public right-of-way. So I think that maybe we could sit down with you and kind of come to some agreement. And I think we can work it through.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm all for that. All right.
Move the action.
Is there any other...
I'm sorry?
I was just going to move the action.
All right. Motion from Mayor Protim Gardner, second, Councilmember Selig. Do we have any public comment on this issue? Other public comment, I should say. Rush, did you have anything else?
I was just going to acknowledge that I walked the property today, and I think when it's all done, no one will ever know anything was done. By the terrain of the property, even when you're walking down this existing driveway, you'll never see what's done, and with it re-landscaped, I have absolutely no issue with it whatsoever.
All right. Any further comment? Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Item 26, Marina Park.
Good evening, council, councilmembers. Happy to bring this to you. This is actually the conclusion of a long effort with the state lands. This is the actual boundary agreement we'd like you to go ahead and approve and start the execution of. This boundary agreement basically removed some portions per the exhibits in here out of the Tideland Trust, particularly the community center, the Girl Scout House, the tennis courts, and it moved some other areas into the Tideland Trust. It'll terminate into a 49-year lease, and that will be followed up with legislation that state land staff will be processing to take that area that now goes to the state in their trust and moves it back into the city of Newport as the trustee over the area. So that's basically the report. If you'd like any specifics, happy to talk.
Any items? Oops, Councilmember Curry?
I have no questions. I'm sorry? I have no questions. I'll just move the item.
Second. Okay, there's a motion.
I would just note, nice work by staff. Took a long time, so good job.
Many people, particularly Leonie Muldoyle, did a great job on this. Others, thank you.
Good job, Dave.
Mayor Protim Gardner?
I'll start.
Oh, all right. Well, you're too modest, Dave. I think your contributions were significant to this, too, you and Leonie both, and so this was really a terrific outcome, and I'm very, very appreciative of the work that's been done here. It was a real struggle. Onto Coastal. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor Hen and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosier. As you know, I've been curious about this item for quite some time, and I share the deputy public works director's happiness that the settlement has finally been reached. And even though it seems to involve a promise that the state land property will eventually be added to that, what the city holds in trust, it does, as had been promised, involve a lease, at least temporarily, which would be the justification for the many closed sessions that have held and held about it. But the justification for those has to be something involving the cost of the lease, and there may be other members of the public other than me wondering what the cost of the lease that was finally arrived at. And looking through this, I found the actual lease that you're agreeing to tonight, starting on page 34. And I read here under, on page 35, it says, "The consideration will be the public use and benefit, subject to the modification by the lease or," that's the State Lands Commission, I believe, "as specified in paragraph two of section four," which are the general provisions of the lease. And I flipped through a few more pages to section four. I don't ever quite know if I'm looking at the same things that you're looking at, but page 39 in my copy of the general provisions that might affect that is blank. It says to be inserted, so I'm still in the dark as to whether the city is promising to pay the State Lands Commission for this lease until the thing is resolved as making it trust land held by the city. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, that was the last item of business. Messages for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Seeing no motions for reconsideration, councilmember, or Mayor Protim Gardner has asked that we close the meeting in memoriam.
I would like it be closed in memory of Jerry Mello. Those of you have read about it in the paper at least, the council member from Port Bragg who stumbled upon a, either a marijuana or an opium farm, and was shot and killed. And I happen to know him. I had an opportunity to work with him at a couple of meetings of the Coastal Issues Committee of the League. And even knowing him just a couple of times, I can tell you, he was really a wonderful person. He was that kind of person that, you're new to a group, he makes you feel like they've been waiting for you and your contribution for as long as he can remember. He took a leadership position with Coastal Issues. We owe him a lot for his activities, and it's just, it's such a shame that someone who contributed so much to his community and to the state... who contributed so much to his community and to the state was killed like that. And if I can editorialize, I think that even the casual drug user must remember that they contribute to actions like this when they buy drugs. But he was a wonderful person, and I would like us to remember him.
Very good, thank you. We are adjourned.